We call this regular meeting to order.
Mayor Querom?
Here.
Councilmember Newman?
Here.
Gomez?
Here.
McCall?
Here.
McCransky?
Here.
Please stand and join us.
Fire Department of the United States of America is the Republic for which the stands one nation under God, and we give this little liberty and justice for all.
So, it started tonight, we got a couple of, uh, polls to be given, and, uh, I'll have to keep it stuck in front, Scott and Nick.
We'll start with, uh, did you want to say a few words? Did you say whatever? Okay, if you said whatever, then you got your okay.
Tonight, we're gonna... Tonight, the first promotion will be that of Nick Vigano to Lieutenant. He was number one on the list. Very good team player, very good motivator and leader. He come to us in two thousand one from the US Navy. He was a damage controller on a ship. Oh.
Ship.
In two thousand six, he become full-time, and today, we're gonna promote him to Lieutenant. Very deserving, and congratulations, Nick.
Hey, Nick, you wanna raise your right hand? Hi, Nick Vigano.
Hi, Nick Vigano.
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant?
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
In the city of Princeton?
In the city of Princeton.
County Bureau?
County Bureau.
And the state of Illinois?
The state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Fire Lieutenant to the best of my ability?
To the Office of Fire Lieutenant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Well, yeah, that's fine. Just get past me. There we go. You want to say a few words about Scott?
I was asked tonight to come up and have the honor to introduce the new Fire Chief here at Princeton Fire Department, Scott Etheridge. He came to the department seventeen years ago. Uh, for the first three or four years, I had the honor of working side by side with him, and then once I was promoted, or he was promoted to Lieutenant, we split, we split our ways, and then the last ten years, I was the chief, working basically side by side with him also. With further ado, Chief Etheridge.
Okay, Scott, raise your right hand. Hi, Scott Etheridge.
Hi, Scott Etheridge.
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Chief?
Having been appointed to the Office of Fire Chief.
In the city of Princeton?
City of Princeton.
In the county of Bureau?
County of Bureau.
In the state of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Fire Chief?
Of the Office of Fire Chief.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Scott, who do you have with you?
My dad, Randy, my daughter Townes, and my son Casey. I don't bring my other son, because he drove the home to town.
I see. Congratulations.
So, before we move on with the meeting, anyone that is here for the polls, and they are free, you are free to answer right, and pardon? You wanna shut that door?
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, so, uh, next order is this public comment. We have public comments. Public comment on the, uh, parking issue? Is it a time to speak?
Speak, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Come on up to the podium.
And just state your name and your money. And I'd also say that there's a study over here on the table, that they're sitting together in twenty seventeen on parallel parking. Might want to pick up a copy of that.
I'm in Michigan, and I just read that thing, number one, you put it on too late, so a lot of people don't know about it yet. They're more controversy about it. But I just think, you didn't think it through, and that, don't smile. I mean, I just don't think you thought it through, because I'm just thinking about, for the parallel parking, number one, that, that, number one, I can't parallel park, so you get that, I'll have to walk around the block. But, um, I just don't think it's right, because when you parallel park, number one, there was somebody that mentioned having children. You have, your mother's driving with a child, she's got in the backseat. Okay, she's gotta get the child out of the car, somebody's coming through. Say a semi's coming through. Where is she gonna park? I mean, what's the chances with her car door open, semi's coming through? It's not gonna give her a lot of room if you put a ramp, or a path right through the middle for bicycles. Okay? So I, you know, I worry about that. Okay? And I think it's going to, it's just, I just don't like the whole idea, and that, I just don't think it's right. And number one, how, I myself do not see people riding bicycles down Main Street. And that, and I mean, I'm uptown at different hours in the day, and I do not see people riding bicycles. Okay, they have First Street. First Street's a good street. They could ride their bicycles on First Street. They could ride their bicycles on Vernon Street. So, I mean, I can't see why they couldn't ride their bicycles on those. I mean, why do they have to go down Main Street? Like I said, I don't see people riding bicycles. And that, and you know yourself, and that, if you put it in temporary, it's gonna go through, and that, you're not gonna let it, you're not gonna take it off. And that, just like Columbus Street. I didn't like the way you did Columbus Street either. And that, because number one, I've never seen anything good about Columbus Street. I worry about the Fire Department, I worry about it terribly, because if there is a fire, how are they gonna get there? If they go down Main Street, okay, there's a parking lot behind all those stores, that's great, but if that parking lot is full, that fire truck's gonna have no time getting through there to a fire. And that, so if they go down to Horseyville, and they go through that alley, that's still gonna create problems. There is not a good way to get to a fire, if there's one over there on Columbus Street. And that, so I just don't, I can't see the reasoning for blocking off that street, because I think it is a hazard for a fire. So then, when you do this with the bicycles, okay, a fire truck comes down that street, or ambulance comes down that street, okay, people are on that, say somebody's on that street with a bicycle. Okay, there you go. Okay, you've gotta set up so that they go down from, from Columbus Street down there. Okay, they get down to the, to the stop sign. Where are they gonna go? When they get to that stop sign? If they wanna go right, okay, bicycle, they don't always look. Okay, so they make a right turn. Okay, there's a car over here, or a car's coming up there, and they just go ahead and turn to the right. Okay, they're gonna have an accident. So, you know, that's creating another problem. So, or they're right, you know, they're, I don't know, I just don't like it. So, that's my opinion.
I'll, I'll address some of those when we get down to, uh, Mayor's comment. Any other public comment? You can, uh, you can speak at the end as well, I mean, there are two public comments here. Okay. Uh, we'll go to approval of invoices, Commissioner Newman?
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on May sixteen twenty twenty-two.
Motion's been second, uh, comments?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Now, go to the approval of invoices, the City of Princeton.
For this period, in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling three hundred fifty thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-five cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. In the, the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling two hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars and three cents. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling four hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents, for a grand total of one million, two hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now we're submitted for disposition. I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Over.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Now, go to your regular business, and City of Princeton.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R dash twenty-two dash oh-two-oh. This is a resolution authorizing two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents in rebuild Illinois funds for street improvements. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R dash two-two dash zero-two-zero.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Over.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R dash twenty-two dash oh-two-one. This is a resolution authorizing three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in motor fuel tax funds for street maintenance. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R dash two-two dash zero-two-one.
Second.
Motion's been second, any comments? Over.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution R dash twenty-two dash oh-two-two. This is a resolution authorizing forty thousand dollars in motor fuel tax funds for street improvements. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R dash two-two dash zero-two-two.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Over.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
Uh, next on the agenda is the, oh, it's another resolution, by golly, R dash twenty-two dash oh-two-three. This is a resolution authorizing obligation retirement in the amount of ninety thousand dollars from the MFT fund. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R dash two-two dash zero-two-three.
Second.
Motion's been second, I'll have two second comments.
I guess the only thing I've mentioned here is with each of these four resolutions, um, these are your motor fuel tax money, you need to designate what they're gonna be spent for, each of them can only be spent on certain items, so, that's why they're broken out the way they are. This last one here is actually, um, an authorization we should've done back in January, and, uh, we missed that one, so we're just going back and making sure that we have the paperwork done. It's been paid, it's actually just the, the debt for the general obligation bond for Upland Avenue, so, um, we're just going back and doing actual paperwork. Bond has been paid, but this resolution needs to be filed.
Motion has been second, any comments? Over.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
And finally, uh, next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-two dash zero-one-two. This is an ordinance, this is the first reading of the ordinance, adopting a treaty ordinance, um, and, Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is, uh, submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O dash two-two dash zero-one-two to the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been second, this, uh, ordinance has been in the works for, uh, years, literally, it's been, uh, worked at, finally got together, Dennis, uh, worked on, Taylor worked on this, uh, quite a bit, I don't know if we have, if you wanna say anything, or we just been going to the...
Good. Just happy it's here, isn't it?
Yeah, we do, all right. Uh, any comments, uh, has been second? Over.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. And we'll go to, uh, City Manager, report?
Uh, just a couple, I mean, just a couple updates, something that's on the agenda here, but Safe Brown School, as you can see, this direction, sidewalks have been tore up, they actually did that very quickly, got them, uh, all taken out. Um, obviously, with the weather, there's been a little bit of a halt, but they are planning to have that whole entire project wrapped up by mid-July, so we'll be ready to go for, for the next school year. They wanted to wait until June, when school is done, so that is moving along quickly. Uh, just another update on Columbus Street, if you've been up there, it has started the process, we've done some of the footings put in for the archway that goes towards the back of the walkway. Um, some of the stuff that we've ordered is starting to come in, coming in a little quicker than we anticipated with the supply, we thought there was gonna be a delay, but it looks like we may have, do you know what payments they put in?
Um, tomorrow, I think the trash...
Um, some of the, the iron, like the trash cans and stuff like that, is, is actually coming in already, so, um, we'll start to see a lot of progress happening quickly now, so, I think we've already got the electric brand? They were up there.
Yeah, thirty foot of it anyway.
So, it is moving along.
Okay, so, a couple things on Mayor's report, first of all, we've had a lot of rain today, I know we had two and a half inches this morning, I think we probably got another, probably two inches, uh, later this afternoon. Um, good news is, uh, we've only had to put out two pumps in the same location, they're over behind East and the Alley. Uh, we usually, in the past, had put out fifteen pumps, put down to two, and it's all because, in my opinion, of the Thompson Street sewer extension we put in two years ago, to take all that water out to the retention pump. Uh, the gist of that is, if we, eliminating the sewer backups in people's basements, and, uh, that's something that's, in the city of Princeton, has dealt with for decades, and I think we finally, we finally got it, uh, controlled. So, uh, the second is the, uh, the pilot proposal, change of main street business district parking. Uh, I'll just, a couple of your points, uh, just on Columbus real quick. Um, you know, fire and ambulance, we, Fire Department and ambulance EMTs, they, they said, they signed off on this a long time ago, they, they had no problem, they, they would never go down the street for a fire. It's too narrow to begin with, uh, that's just their, that was their opinion and position, so that's, that's why that, uh, is answering that issue. The other thing is, I mentioned, um, I already put it out, uh, my post was last night, it was, it was too short, my experience with my Facebook post is, they run their course in about twelve hours, uh, twelve to fifteen hours, that's same case here, or went out to over three, thirty-five hundred people, over, uh, over a thousand people read the post, according to the, uh, uh, information from Facebook, so, it was just, that's just the way, I don't, that's just the way it is, so. So, as far as the, uh, this, uh, proposal, this, uh, to do a thirty-day trial, which would be in, uh, probably mid-July to mid-August, um, I hear a lot about no bike paths, and, uh, the Princeton, uh, Pedestrian Bicycle Committee has put together a bike plan. Uh, in that bike plan, they show bike paths throughout the city of Princeton, you may be seeing some of those signs popping up now in neighborhoods, bike lanes and so on. Uh, Princeton is committed, uh, to, to working towards becoming a bicycle-friendly community. The bike paths in their, in their plan, and also in the Princeton Comprehensive Plan, or the Main Street Revitalization Plan, shows a bike path going down the middle of Main Street, the South End Business District, however, it's, it's a plan, I mean, there's nothing, you know, it's nothing, it, it has been set that that is ever going to occur, and, and doing the, uh, uh, doing the parallel parking, it's not, you know, the trial, it's not being done specifically for a bike path going down the center of Main Street. Bike path goes down there, that's gonna be down the road, this is more about, uh, just promoting safety, and, uh, you know, vehicles, SUVs, pickup trucks, uh, they're getting bigger and longer every year. Uh, if you go down Main Street, any day when, uh, when Main Street is busy with traffic and parks, you know, parking, I mean, you're highway, I have to weave out because I'm going around pickup trucks that are sticking way down in the street, and that's just the, the nature of the beast, and it's something that is, uh, makes it very difficult for someone parking next to that vehicle to back out, because they have to inch out, and as they're inching out, and vehicles are coming up behind them, they're stopping, you're, you're creating, obviously, a, uh, you know, if there's traffic, that, that, you've got vehicles that are stopped, they're backing up, they're waiting for cars to back out, it's, you know, same thing on, uh, you know, someone that's parallel parking, if they're gonna back in, yeah, they're gonna stop traffic, that's just part of parallel parking, I mean, it's, that's just part of it. So, both of them have pluses and minuses, but, you know, as far as, uh, as safety is concerned, if you look up at the North End, um, that used to be diagonal parking until the fifties, and the city changed it to parallel parking. I don't know the specific reason for that, I'm assuming it's probably because it's a state rail, but we've had no issues up there with parallel parking, we've had no issues with people opening their car doors, and the cars driving by, or kids getting out of cars, we've had zero issues with that throughout the years. The, the width of that street up there, from curb to curb, is fifty-four feet, the width of Main Street, South End, is fifty-eight feet, who pick up four feet? I mean, you have parallel parking, it's gonna widen that street significantly, but safety is, is unquestionably, in my mind, enhanced by this. Um, the other thing is, um, I was asked today about accidents, so, I, I checked with IDOT today on traffic counts. So, the average daily traffic count on South Main Street between Peru and the courthouse is five thousand, two hundred and fifty vehicles, that's an average. Up on the North End, between Marquette and Elm Place, on average, ten thousand, four hundred vehicles. Accidents, at the North End, in the last, in the last year, the last twelve months, seven accidents. Accidents on the South End, with fifty-four hundred and fifty vehicles, three. You got twice as much traffic at the North End as you do at the South End, the accidents are split down the middle as a wash. You know, it's never been about accidents, but it has been about making it safer and making it easier, as far as the parallel parking is concerned. So you don't have to back out into traffic when it's so difficult to do so anymore, and this hasn't, wasn't, this really wasn't a problem if you go back twenty-five years, vehicles weren't as big as they are today, but they're making them bigger, taller, longer, and that's not, personally, I don't see that, uh, see that, uh, go out anywhere. And I, I also have read comments about people that are concerned about, you know, our businesses, they're gonna, you know, it's, it's gonna affect and hurt our businesses. Well, our sales tax revenue shows, and it has shown for the last number of years, that we are doing incredibly well, including the North End, we have parallel parking all over the place. North End is thriving, as is the South End. So, I, I've talked to business owners down here at the South End, I talked to two more of them today, two women that have very successful businesses on South Main Street, they have no issue with this. None whatsoever, so, if you're concerned about the businesses, go talk to them yourself. I've talked to them, they have no, you know, so, they're interested in knowing what this is. It's a thirty-day trial, this is something that's just being put into place, and we're doing it, and, you know, the comments that, you know, you know if you do a trial, this isn't gonna go away, well, it didn't go away with Columbus Street, because we did not have significant opposition to that project. There was opposition, but it was not significant. When we took those four parking stalls away from in front of tanks, so we could enlarge that parking, or that intersection at Peru and Main, to put a left turn lane in there, to eliminate the, uh, the, uh, the bottleneck that was occurring there, and then we put two parallel spaces in front of the parking, we took four parking spaces away there as well, we had opposition to that too, but it was not significant, we went through it, did a trial, it worked out, it stayed. So, will that same thing happen here? I do not, and for that's the only, but if we can't, you know, we're a growing community, we are a popular community, we're a progressive community, and we can't continue to be that way unless we consider, look at ideas, and give things a try. If they work great, if they don't, you go back to the drawing board, and you're gonna start over. But, we've done a lot of change in the last eight years in this town, and it's showing, you know, we're a growing community, and, uh, in my opinion, that's gonna, that's gonna continue. Um, also, um, I was talking to the girls up on, on Main Street today, and we're talking about the parking, there's a lot, you know, like people say, they, they don't wanna parallel park, they don't know how to parallel park, and, you know, I get that, I understand that, but there's over a hundred parking spaces behind schools, and that parking lot, it's, it's barely half full at any given time. We renovated the parking lot a couple years, uh, two years ago, and put in all the additional parking spaces, same thing with downtown Pub, it's all been restrikt, we added parking, that parking lot is barely full at any given time. The parking lot behind the Crowder Building, there's always available spaces behind there, we added parking there when we restrikt that parking lot a couple of years ago. You know, we have parking behind the Clark House, that's, that's a city parking lot, and actually, the parking lot across from, uh, the Clark House, across Pleasant Street on the corner, is also a city parking lot. And then you got off-street parking, although the off-street parking, side streets, it's all share low parking, always has been. So, again, it's an idea. See how it works, so, I'm gonna leave it there, just go over to the council, but I wanted to answer some of the concerns that I heard here, what I've seen on, uh, Capitol Hill.
So what are we gonna measure?
I heard CNN goes, we'll see what the, we'll see if the parking spaces are being used, we'll see if we get complaints from business owners, you know, whatever, you know, we'll put it out there, we want, it'll be for thirty days, we wanna make sure people understand, you have an open avenue, I mean, it's got to be, it's gotta be a significant issue. I didn't talk to, I didn't talk to them. Well, I, I talked to, uh, business owners up there, but I don't wanna mention who they are, but fear that they might be approached. So, the pilot program, from where to where, it's, uh, so we're not doing the entire Main Street as a pilot, we just, we just wanna do it from the, from the courthouse to Columbus, or to Columbus Street, on both sides. Everything else stays diagonal, but, and it's during a busy time of year, you know, July, August, we'll see what, you know, like there to be a lot of traffic, and that's the best way, I think, to measure it and see how things work. There is a report I mentioned, and before you leave, you need, you should pick one of these up, I did put them over here on the table, we had a, uh, we had a... I did put them over here on the table. We had a, we had a intern from Germany, worked for the city in 2017 when Rachel was here, and in Yankee, and she put together, this is at the time that we were working on our Main Street Revitalization Program. And so we were talking about this even before 2017. So this isn't something that's just a pie, pie in the sky idea that was just thrown out. This is something we've been discussing for a long time. We've got the trees now back on Main Street, we've got lights in the trees, everything looks, you know, I hope, festive. So this is just another step in that, in that direction. But I would encourage you to pick the report up, seven pages long. And give it a read, go ahead.
The part on the timing, we were talking about, trying this for a time period, and why is it coming back up? Well, we're looking at redoing Main Street next year, the entire stretch of Main Street, and then around the courthouse as well. So now's the time for, you know, the bike committee to be thinking, you know, how does, how does this redo of Main Street fit with bike plan? So it kind of brought up this discussion again. So that's why now we're looking at, if we're going to be redoing Main Street, we need to be thinking about what all our options are, and what are some of the things that we, the city has thought about over the years, that maybe we want to test out, if we'd like. So I don't know if anybody from the bike committee wants to give their thoughts?
I'll share a few.
Just need your, your, your lead.
I'm Matt May, I'm chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. Is this working?
Yeah.
Off and on.
Is it on?
Talk loud.
It's off and on.
Okay. I'll try to talk loud. So, a few things I would like to reiterate that this trial period, or even a permanent change in the type of parking down there, isn't being done for the sake of giving bicyclists access to anything. Bicyclists already have access to everything. This would, in my opinion, and I believe the committee would agree that doing this in time would make bicycling more safe. Bicyclists can already ride that stretch of road, along with every other road everywhere. This would just make it safer. But I don't think, and I'd like to reiterate what Mayor Quinram has said, that this isn't being done for the sake of the bicycle committee, it's being done for the sake of vehicular safety. And I agree with Joel, big vehicles backing out of diagonal spaces in, on a narrow road does encourage accidents to happen. I think having the road widened by parallel parking would increase the safety of that part of town. And then, I didn't see what was posted publicly, as far as, you know, this trial coming up and whatnot, but I know in my email from Joel, it said that there was a bike lane going down the middle of Main, and I did bring a copy of the bicycle plan that was approved by City Council back in 2018. And I wanted to just kind of say what it says about that stretch of road, in the hypothetical situation where parallel parking is, is made permanent. So it says that parallel parking would allow shared lane markings to be placed further right within the lane, or, shared lane markings would, would be placed right within the lanes. So these are, shared lane markings are what we commonly refer to as charos. So it's not a bike lane being produced down the middle of Main Street, this would be just charos putting, put in the lane of traffic. And charos, you've probably seen them, not in Princeton, but in other communities, where it looks sort of like an arrow with a little image of a bicycle in front of the arrow. And it just indicates that, you know, bicycles use this lane, and vehicles use this lane. So it's just an added safety measure, really, is all it is, but with the street being widened, visibility, you know, for everybody with these markings, it just makes a safer environment for vehicles and for bicycles. But, yeah, I don't want the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee to be construed as some sort of a scapegoat for a decision being made by the city, because this isn't, you know, the bike plan allows for both diagonal parking and shared, or, and parallel parking. Do I think it would be safer if it was parallel parking? Yes, I do. And I definitely approve of, you know, a 30-day trial period. I think that's a great idea. So that's all I have. Anybody have questions for me?
Yeah, it's just a component
Yeah.
of the overall project. It's just a, it's just another component that will be, will be considered at some point.
Yep.
I definitely would also, I don't want to sound like I didn't have, I think a 30-day is important. I mean, rather than just saying, hey, you're originally going to do, so I do like a 30-day, see how it's going to go.
Yep.
I will say one other thing, because I've read a lot of comments about independent drivers. You're going down Main Street, and somebody's going to open their door, and somebody's going to be independent, and somebody's going to hit a door, or somebody's going to hit a child that's running out, or something along those lines, or, or whatever. Again, I referenced the width of the street at the North End compared to the width of the street down here, and how much more wider it is down here. But with the information on the accidents, I mentioned how many with the North End and South End. In the last 12-month period, there have been 238 auto accidents in the city of Princeton. That's significantly less than one a day. And when you look at the amount of traffic this town has on a daily basis, that is an incredible number. It tells me that people in Princeton, when they drive their cars, they are attentive. They're very attentive. So, and the other thing that I hear a lot about on Main Street is, especially down here, I hear from some shop owners, is traffic goes down Main Street so fast. Well, it's very congested there. The lanes are, are smaller because of the day of party. You know, a car can go by down through there going 25 miles an hour, and it makes it look like it's going pretty fast. Studies have shown, and Kim refers to it, and here, somebody referred to it on, on Facebook as well, that actually, the parallel parking in the wider streets actually slows traffic, for whatever reason. I don't know the reason, but something else to keep in mind. But that will, that'll be more now too, a 30-day period, you can see, especially, at least, you know, on that end of town, on that end of the Main Streets.
Well, I like the idea of the trial, because if we're going to pick up Main next year, we want to stripe it right first time. We don't want to experiment with something next year. Now would be the time for us to try this, and to see how successful, or not successful, this thing will turn out to be.
Yeah, I'd have to agree on the trial part of it. I think it's reconvene 30 days as a whole, and see what other things, and see what kind of, you know, we've hurt in the business owners. But I will say too, you know, it was a great, pretty quick turnaround from last night to today, keeping going. So, open to comments, maybe on the next meeting would be, you know.
There was going to be a whole lot of people here tonight.
Yeah, so, that's just keep that in mind. But I think, you know, we, we had a conversation about, you know, will it affect the business owners, where, you know, I brought that up, I actually brought up maybe adding in front of courthouse on the, on that side, to the west side of the road. Adding that in, because it's such, you can't, when you come from the jail side there on the South End, or you just can't see going on the Main side, it's just that maybe adding that into this as a trial. So I think, like all of us said, a trial's a trial, and if it doesn't work, then we just got to admit it doesn't work, and go back to what we were doing before.
I had two talks with some people that are very, they're, they spin it up in the North End quite a bit, and they talked about parallel parking, as to how many close calls there has been over there, even with the parallel parking. I myself can park very small spots. I grew up in Chicago, and I learned how to do it extremely well. What I've seen here, not many people know how to do it very well. It's easier for, like, even down in the South End, when they put those two parallel parkings, all they do is just pull it right up. That's not really parallel parking, that's just pulling up their parking spot. And so, the person that did tell me this is that there has been a lot of close calls, and one of the biggest reasons, you know, you're telling me about safety, is not because a person doesn't know how to drive, it's the simple fact that they're not really paying attention. I mentioned that there is people that do pay attention. I think the only reason you haven't had many accidents is because one person is not paying attention, they're just pulling right out, tires of who it is, and the other ones are actually paying attention where they're, they're doing their defensive driving, as you were talking, that's why they don't hit it. And I've actually seen that at that, and including myself, that I've gotten pretty close to some of the people out here going sometimes, and everything else, including being parked and being hit for no reason. Again, I think it's more of, it's not more, it's more of a safety, but it's more of a accountability, and people being responsible for driving their own vehicles, is that they can cause damage to anybody, regardless of whether you're a parallel parker or you're not. I just think that 30-day trials, they sometimes don't work very well. You know, Mayor's mentioned that, because there wasn't much opposition. Yes, what I've seen is that once you do a 30-day trial, pretty most parts stay permanent. Also, I mentioned about being progressive. You know, we talked about this a long time ago, you know, and I hear about dog parks, for the young people, they want to take their dogs out for a walk. It's part of being a progressive town, and there's none here. We talked about some chickens, and I know there's a lot of towns and big cities that do have that, that in place, to allow people to live extremely well, and take care of their, their communities. And again, you know, if you want to be progressive, then you have to allow a lot more things than just, just parking, or just bicycle. There's a lot more things to be in a progressive town than just parallel parking.
Okay, do we have a consensus to go forward?
All right.
In a minute, you have to wait until public comment.
Oh.
No, we're in a mirror.
I like the idea of doing the trial early versus next year. I think everything deserves a chance to take a look at it. This would be the time to do it. I like the idea that visibility for pedestrians that are crossing either within the crosswalks, or quote-unquote jaywalking, are easier to see, as well with parallel parking arrangements. I am kind of skeptical to see just how successful people will be in parallel parking. It's kind of tricky, and some people are good at it, and some aren't. But I think that we need to emphasize that we have about 340 parking spaces on either side of the street that are available, and as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, most of them are available all the time. They just need to find them and go use them as a two-minute walk around the corner to get to Main Street. So I think we should give it a try.
I like the idea of a trial, and, but I'm, I hope that we can get enough information from the business owners' office, so that, I think this impacts them a lot. I know the safety is important, where it has been for all of us. So I, I hope in 30 days, if we haven't been able to get enough information, we might be considering an additional monitoring, allow enough time to be able to see what happens, we actually.
We only have about 40 days before we start the trial. So we've got, there's a lot of, you know, fat gathering that can be between now and then as well. So, just, and again, just because we're, we're going ahead with a, with a trial period, doesn't mean it's going to go through. I mean, right? I don't know what's going to happen in, you know, the next 40 days or so, and, you know, maybe it's something that gets scrapped anyway. But we're moving forward at this point for a 30-day trial, and see how it goes. Anything else? Okay, any old business tonight? Any new business? Public comments?
I guess mostly I just have a question, listening to the conversation. Why is the West Side of Main Street an issue down there, or very south there?
You're talking about courthouse?
Before, before you get to the courthouse, yeah. Why is that an issue for pulling out?
Are you going off my comments? Or my comments were based off courthouse.
Because he said we're going to do the East Side and the West Side, from Columbus Street down to...
It's just doing both sides of the street, and that, and that section, if you have that section, or maybe we go and do it further up? I mean, it's just a...
What about if you just eliminate a few spots on the East Side, so that the cars that are coming around the corner have more of a chance to look and see somebody maybe backing out of the diagonal spaces. It would still be the convenience for drivers that are accustomed to the diagonal, rather than parallel. I'm one of them, as I think there are many here in our town. And just leave the West Side diagonal away. I mean, it's not like there's traffic, it's no different than any of the other rest of the streets on the West Side.
You're saying need the West Side diagonal and, and the East Side parallel?
Well, no. I said eliminate a couple, a few of the diagonals places, right at the very South End, like in front of Four Seasons, and right at the very end. That way, as the cars are coming around the corner and heading north, there's more of a, a space, an opportunity to see if cars are coming there, and for the cars that are driving north, to see somebody backing out, and slow down maybe. Just an idea. I can't see that we need to change the whole thing. I think we're going to lose too many parking spaces. Sometimes, I know you said we'd only lose four in your post.
Let me, let me correct that.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't have, I didn't have, I didn't have Kim's report.
Oh.
And I knew we had it, but it was done in 2017, we couldn't find it, well, today I found it, by doing a, an email search. So anyway, when I looked through the report, the number is, we do, by doing this, 4% of the overall parking spaces in the South End. That includes the parking lots behind. She was including everything.
Oh, I see.
So we're losing 4%, but we've already lost eight diagonal parking spaces, four in front of tanks, and four in front of the Crowder Building. We replaced those with two large, to have a point, parallel parking.
Right. They're very easy to get.
But we added, yeah, but we, when we restripped behind the Crowder Building, we added new parking spaces back there, and that made up for those. And we added new parking behind Spoons', we added new parking behind the courthouse. So there's, there's 300, probably 360 parking spaces.
Just a thought though.
No.
You know, maybe an option, rather than taking away the whole block. Because you say it's for safety, but if it's not going to change the other blocks...
Well, it would. I see, I see what you're saying.
The option is...
So if, if it proves successful, when we repave Main Street next year, it'll all be parallel, from Peru to the courthouse.
That's what I asked you on that, in your email or text to the fact.
Yeah, I would include everything, hopefully be parallel.
Okay, thank you for that.
And that's, that was kind of the reason for doing that, is because we're repaving next year. If we're going to do it, and we put new striding down, let's find out if it's going to work or not.
Okay, makes sense. Hi, it's Jeremy Woodley. I don't do Facebook, so I have no idea you're talking about bicycles. I have issues. First of all, people wear black, whether they're walking, or whether they're riding a bike.
It's a little better.
And they, yeah, right, but not at night, because this happens constantly. I put at least 50 miles a day on my car, and I see a lot of it. I see people driving the wrong way. In the last two weeks, you wouldn't believe how many people came around. The other, I'm going back, I thought we had said something that we were not going to do bike paths on Main Street. I thought that was a conclusion some years ago.
With diagonal parking, I think that was the issue.
Well, I've been in Chicago, and they have bike routes, okay? I was in a funeral procession. Do you know who gets the right of way? The bike. They can put their hand out, and everybody has to stop. There is a limit. They have to follow rules like everybody else. It has gotten so bad there, that they even have signs, the light signs, have little lights on them. I assume we're not going to go that far. I mean, we have the paths, we're still, I'm sorry, we're still a small town. The other is, if it's down the middle of Main Street, look at the problem we have at the intersection of Peru and, and Main, because the lights are the way they are. I even till this day have people turning in front of me, because they have a green light. I have asked you to have been, I know you can't, because it's the state of Illinois, just like you're going down to Peoria, where they have those yellow arrows, and then they...
just like you're going down to Peoria where they have those yellow arrows and then they tell you what to do, which I find a lot safer than turning these green lights and people turning in front of you. And no, this didn't happen for me. A strong vote, this is great. But, uh, it, it, you know, I still am concerned about upside actual path for a bike down Main Street. You know, the safety signs throughout the town and that, I find fine. But, uh, but the other is just the way people dress and the lack of lights. It's not just the bikes, it's the walkers. So this is my unprepared speech, I didn't know you were talking.
Well, you'll be, you'll be, you'll be glad to hear that next year, as part of the coordination of repaving South Main Street and Peru and courthouse, IDOT's going to come in and they're going to fix and repair that intersection because that's theirs, and we're getting all new lighting, lights. So you'll probably see what you're referring to because that's the upcoming.
I think it'd be a lot safer.
Yeah, well, that's next year, that's coming. Uh, any other public comment? I'll irritate a motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene again for our next regular council meeting on the Monday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, seven o'clock at the.
One second, call.
Governor Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned and will be all for.